Hello, I'm Chris Hoffman and on behalf of Empower Our Future, I'd like to welcome everybody to this Empower Hour. Empower Our Future is a Boulder-based coalition of organizations and individuals working towards 100% renewable electricity by 2030 in an electrical system that is more democratic, centralized, competitive, and equitable than is currently provided by Excel's monopoly. We also support other efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. As part of our community outreach, we have been presenting Empower Hour webinars on climate, environment, and energy-related topics via Zoom. Videos of previous events are available on our website, empowerourfuture.org. Before I go farther, I want to acknowledge that here in Colorado, we live on the traditional homeland of the Ute, Arapahoe, and Cheyenne. Let us seek to understand the actions that took these lands from them and seek to understand how to live in right relationship with them today and with this land and with all the creatures that inhabit it. Tonight's Empower Hour forum is designed to let the community get to know the candidates for Boulder County Commissioner and the candidate's thoughts on issues related to climate, environment, and energy. We thank the candidates, Elena Shively and Ashley Stolzmann, for participating and for their interest in serving the community by being on the county commission. We would also like to thank our affiliates who have helped to promote this event, Clean Energy Action, Green Latinos, and 350 Colorado. Katie Rodriguez of 350 Colorado is here tonight and will be co-facilitating this event.
Hello, I'm Katie Rodriguez. I'm the Boulder County Team Coordinator for 350 Colorado. 350 Colorado is building the local grassroots movement to solve the climate crisis in transition to a sustainable future. Our main pillars of action are movement building, keeping fossil fuels in the ground, and promoting solutions. The Empower Hour team has solicited questions from the community and from our affiliated organizations, and we've received a lot of questions. In the interest of time and to avoid duplication, we've consolidated almost all of these questions into just eight. We are sorry that we will not be able to take additional questions live during this session. The Board of County Commissioners consists of three individuals elected to serve four-year terms as leaders of the Boulder County Government. All three commissioners are elected at large by the voters of Boulder County and represent the county as a whole. The statewide primary election is June 28th. Voters will receive mail-in ballots, registered Democrats, a Democratic Party ballot, and registered Republicans, a Republican Party ballot. Unaffiliated voters will receive both ballots but can only vote one of the ballots. Qualified residents may register to vote up to and including Election Day. However, in order to receive a ballot in the mail, the Boulder County Clerk's Office must receive your voter registration no later than eight days before the election. If you register after this time, you must visit a vote center in order to vote. Vote Center locations and other voting information are available on the Boulder County Clerk's website.
Now, I'd like to give the candidates three minutes each to introduce themselves, and by a coin toss, we'll start with Ashley.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you very much for hosting this Empower Hour. It's wonderful to see everyone, even if it's only through Zoom. I would love to see everyone in person. My name's Ashley Stolzmann. I'm currently the mayor of Louisville, and I'm a candidate for Boulder County Commissioner District Three. I grew up in Evergreen, Colorado. I fell in love with the wilderness. I was in a rural area. We had horses and my two sisters, and I spent most of our time outside growing up, hiking, rafting, and camping with our friends. Colorado is an amazing place to experience nature and really fall in love and learn why we all need to cherish it and protect it. And so that's where my deep passion for nature and the environment comes from. I went to public school in Evergreen and in high school really fell in love with science. And that's when I decided I would go to Colorado School of Mines and become an engineer. My degree's in chemical engineering. I graduated first in my class from School of Mines. And when you graduate from school, you have a job right out. So I started making toner and photo conductor drums out of school at Lex Market North Boulder. And I was looking around for where to live and found Louisville, and it's been my forever home since and will be my forever home. I love Boulder County. I love to live here. The hiking is fantastic. The connection to nature is fantastic, and the people are fantastic. And we've really seen that support through the global pandemic of neighbors helping neighbors and people picking up groceries and helping one another when they couldn't go out. And even more so, most recently in my community, we've seen that Colorado spirit in the Marshall Fire. People have been so supportive of one another and helped one another through this climate disaster. And it is a climate disaster. On the 30th, we experienced, because of drought and wind, a fire that has devastated about 10% of the housing in our communities of Superior, Louisville, and East Boulder County. And we have to take action, and that is really what caused me to run for Boulder County Commissioner. The commissioners will be responsible for the recovery and ensuring that this type of disaster is better mitigated in the future through better preparedness, and I am up for the job. I'll use my decade of experience as an elected official to ensure that we get solutions that are action-oriented and not just, you know, talk and paper. So we're going to get things done. And there's too much writing on this. We have housing problems. The unhoused are not being treated fairly. We have issues with mental health. We have tremendous transportation problems that need to be solved.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. And, you know, my experience as the Chair of the Denver Regional Council of Governments and on the Mile High Flood District will really leverage my experience for the position of County Commissioner. I'm happy to serve the community, and I look forward to the questions tonight. Thank you so much. I hope I can count on your support.
Elena, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two values that I will center every day as Boulder County Commissioner: climate and equity. Or in other words, people and the planet. We'll get this out of the way. I'm not a scientist. I am a book nerd, a lawyer, a working mom, a wife, and a lifelong Boulder County resident. I'm not a scientist, and I know I'm not an expert in all things. No commissioner could be. I bring needed and necessary background in county governance. I bring advocacy, lifelong commitment to equity, and thick skin as a former public defender, standing up for others and asking hard questions. I'm a negotiator, collaborator, partner. I've worked directly on equity, mental health, substance use, and unhoused populations, and have achieved real metrics of systemic reform. I'm a systems thinker with Venn diagrams constantly in mind about how all of our challenges intersect. I value other voices, and I'm tough but collaborative, and that style's effective. I will lift the underserved. I will lift the voices of experts like you all. I will do my homework, represent well, listen and learn, and lead in a way that achieves results, innovation, and equity. I am a client, climate activist. It hasn't been my vocation, but it's no less important to me. It's central to who I am, how I was raised, and how we are raising our girls, age five and nine. I grew up here in Boulder County on Sugarloaf Mountain in a house with old-school solar water drums with what we thought then was constant fear of forest fires. We conserved our water, had reusable grocery bags before that was a thing. We planned trips to town to not use gas. My uncle started the first natural food grocery store. I had climate activists and outdoor enthusiasts parents. And each night at dinner, we talked about how each of us did our part to help Mother Earth. We composted. If we had a plastic bag, goodness forbid, my mom washed it and reused it. And I begged for Lunchables to fit in, and it never happened. When I was teased for having my lunch wrapped in pieces of washable cloth, we responded by suggesting that EcoCycle come to visit our class in elementary school, and they did. Today, like many of you, I'm kept awake at night by the climate emergency. For my girls, if I'm awake at night worried about fires, what does their future look like?
Thirty seconds.
If we have F for air quality, what will the air be like for their children? Those small and big changes add up, but are we on target? Are we doing enough? We are a dual-working home, better off than so many yet struggling to live and work in such a beautiful and expensive place. We need to make sure home energy solutions are accessible to everyone. Those who contribute the least to our gas emissions are impacted the most. Change takes courage. I'll put everything I have behind climate action.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. First question. Elena first, then Ashley. And I'll repeat the question. But this is the question. A recent study from CU Boulder confirms that wildfires have tripled in frequency and quadrupled in size compared to years prior to the year 2000, and we have only just begun to experience the consequences of warming planet. With yet another Boulder County fire on April 30th started by electrical lines, as reported by the county sheriff, what actions would you undertake to reduce fire hazards from electrical lines such as through requiring undergrounding of power lines or supporting microgrids or other measures? And two minutes, please.
Thank you. I was at Office of Emergency Management during the Marshall Fire response and then at the Disaster Assistance Center for a few weeks after that. We were dealing with multiple emergencies all tied to one. We had resources at one fire when the other fire came in that was much larger and more dangerous. And we were taking calls from people worried about their pipes as we had the impending freeze, which helped with the fire, but created a lot of issues with power and electricity. Let's keep pushing Excel for their plans for undergrounding. Let's negotiate. Let's work on it because they do create fire danger. They disrupt ecosystem with their herbicide use. And let's think about how we can create ways that we have fewer outages. So microgrids are one solution. And working with the power companies to demand that they do more and really help to center health and safety.
Thank you. And same question. With yet another county fire on April 30th started by electrical lines, as reported by the county sheriff, what actions would you undertake to reduce fire hazards from electrical lines such as through requiring undergrounding of power lines or supporting microgrids or other measures? Ashley?
Thank you very much. We cannot wait for Elena or myself to be the next county commissioner. I'm taking action on this now, working with Excel Energy to Underground Lines. We have an undergrounding fund that all users pay into in the Excel system. Now I'll talk about the folks who aren't served by Excel in the county next, because not everyone is served by Excel. But we are using the undergrounding funds that have accumulated over time to proactively underground lines, particularly at the Wildland Urban Interface, which we now all know has expanded in scope and area. When you underground lines, additional funding has to come to underline the other types of utilities like Comcast and phone lines that are there. There's not funding available for that. So we need to be creative with the infrastructure money that's available now for microgridding and for undergrounding. And so we are at a really unique time where the federal government has given our state and county and our local governments funds to do exactly this type of thing. Up in northern Colorado, they've put some microgrids in that are very unique. We're meeting with them to try to replicate that for our utilities and go after the most sensitive infrastructure like water utilities, service station, police service centers, things like that where people need to go in an emergency. But we need to continue this. This won't be done in one year. This won't be done in two years. But we need to expect that there's really rapid progress on this, particularly in the Wildland Urban Interface. For the utility areas that aren't served by Excel with the undergrounding line, it's really fantastic because the Longmont Council has that control in playing in the utility, and they're fantastic partners to work with. And they are committed to climate action. They are committed to undergrounding utilities. And so working with them as well to ensure that we're more resilient. We implement microgrid systems, and we also underground the lines at the same time.
Thank you. Next question, this time Ashley first, then Elena. With the Marshall Fire, Boulder County has had a big wake-up call, and we now understand that we will deal with climate change either by design or by disaster. Since we all want to avoid disaster, how actively will you support local energy solutions such as rooftop solar, microgrids, and new advanced energy storage as opposed to continued reliance on central power plants and gas lines which produce greenhouse gases and additional transmission lines with their potential fire risks and vulnerability to extreme weather?
Thank you. The more we can, the more we can get microgridding and local systems and battery backup, the more resilient we'll be. There's also a place for utility scale, solar utility scale, wind, so you can position things exactly correctly. So like at our water utility plant, we can put in a system that can charge more than just our plant because we have space for it. So we can distribute that to other areas and make the microgrid serve more than just one space. But it's really important that we become more resilient in this area because as one area is shut down from a fire or a flood or another type of climate disaster, you can, you can still operate other areas. We saw during the Marshall Fire that our water utility was without natural gas. And they had to actually bring a truck full of methane gas into a burning fire to be able to pump water for firefighters. And so, I mean, this kind of thing, this isn't, this isn't resilient. This isn't what we need to do. We need to move beyond that. And then we have duplicative systems. Our system in Louisville is connected to Superior and Lafayette. We have multiple water systems in Louisville. And we need to be able to move between these systems and coordinate and work together. And the best way we can do that is through being more resilient with independent power. Having solar power available with battery storage is critical to our future. And I'm just sort of doubling down on the first point that we have access to funds right now that we normally would not have access to.
Thirty seconds.
And so we really need to take advantage of this opportunity and ensure that the funds that we have access to go toward a more resilient future rather than a carbon emission fueled future. So we have an obligation, and I'm committed to ensure that we see that zero emission future that's more resilient.
Thank you. And now Elena, the same question. How actively will you support local energy solutions such as rooftop solar, microgrids, and new advanced energy storage as opposed to continued reliance on central power plants and gas lines which produce greenhouse gases and additional transmission lines with their potential fire risks and vulnerability to extreme weather?
Extremely. I will support all of the above, both expanding personal and microgrids and expanding renewables on the central grid. Resiliency for climate change, reducing our greenhouse gas emissions and, and being concerned about future outages because of disasters and those massive lines. I mean, we've seen over 100,000 people without power. Those backup options and that climate resiliency is part of Boulder County's history. We have a rich history of microgrids going back into the 90s with CU Boulder and NREL and our early adopters. The legislation passed recently will help us do more of that. I'm glad to see that we have money on hand, and I agree that we have money that we can use, but we need to central, send, center equity. We need to make sure we're incentivizing renewables for families and communities and businesses. Some of that personal use is still cost prohibitive to those who'd really benefit. And it would also help with affordability for low-income families, for working middle-class families, for manufactured homes that don't always have access to the forefront of these types of technologies. It's an investment upfront. It's one we have to do. Climate chaos, we're looking often for the easiest, quick fix solution. But we have to do that deeper work on who doesn't have access, those root causes, things that might not be popular, like the giant huge homes that are throwing solar on top, but are, it's kind of like buying carbon offsets for bad behavior. And so we need to think about who's contributing most to the greenhouse gas, who's suffering the most, and how we can maximize all of this. Maximize space, the collective alternative energies, solar gardens, parking lot gardens, all of the above. Thank you.
Time.
Elena. Next question. Elena, you may answer first, and then Ashley. The Boulder County Comprehensive Plan commits to protect designated critical wildlife habitat, rare plant communities, environmental conservation areas, and cultural sites. As Commissioner, will you abide by these commitments without negotiating these commitments away to appease recreational and other user groups?
All of those values are incredibly important, and I am, the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan is over 200 pages. I think it's important that we continue to reconvene for updates that add more focus on resiliency, especially in light of the Marshall Fire and what we can learn. And some of that is going to be considering how those types of climate disasters specifically affect habitat and wildlife. We need to convene and update individual departments for updated plans and focus on that climate action and resilience. It's important that we consider the ecosystem in all that we do. So even in putting electrical lines underground, we do need to think about how we can do that without disrupting that. Another thing I'd like to see expanded in our open space plans and land management for the county is working with indigenous leaders on open space land management. How can we work together with the indigenous people who occupied, or excuse me, who lived originally on the land and use some of those practices to help? The last thing I'd say is that we have a huge opportunity to continue to use regenerative agriculture. And I'm excited about how that can help both with our keystone species, reduction in use of natural fertilizers and pesticides and herbicides, and really help to decrease water use and help to trap carbon as well.
Thirty seconds.
Oh, okay. Lost track of how much time I had left. The other piece about the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan is, is that we recognize that people do live here to recreate. And so finding ways that we can work together for solutions. So where are there places that we can have a recreational cyclists and hikers and really work to establish path connectivity without disrupting further?
Time.
Keystone species. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ashley, the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan commits to protect designated critical wildlife habitat, rare plant communities, environmental conservation areas, and cultural sites. As Commissioner, will you abide by these commitments without negotiating commitments away to appease recreational and other user groups?
Thank you for the question. I think there are a lot of people in the county that are confused, you know, because there are so many different types of open space designation. So for example, agricultural land is not one of these places that you've talked about. In the areas where we have critical habitat and wildlife or critical historic features, we do need to abide by the Comprehensive Plan and ensure that we're protecting them. There are plenty of facilities that are appropriate for passive recreation that have been designated that way, where there's biking and hiking. But in really critical areas, we need to ensure that we are being good stewards of the land. In many cases, the voters approved land or even collected signatures for petitions just to protect it for habitat. Now, that doesn't mean that there's no management or maintenance of the land because sometimes, like human-caused, things can spill into the land, like from the fire. For example, debris from the fire can go into an area. So sometimes the trained staff will need to access the areas to ensure that there is good maintenance and protection. But that doesn't mean that it's an appropriate area for visitation. Now, there are other areas that are designated that are wonderful to give people the experience and the access to the outdoors so people can connect with nature and, and really realize why, why we're also working hard to protect the planet and each other. So we do need to abide by the Comprehensive Plan and protect those most sensitive areas. That's my complete answer. So you're welcome to move to the next question.
Thank you. The next question, Ashley, you may answer first. Although the general public is accelerating its adoption of electric vehicles, the public has very little awareness of what is known as beneficial electrification. Beneficial electrification is the electrification of houses and commercial spaces with state-of-the-art devices such as cold climate heat pumps, heat pump water heaters, and induction electric stoves. These devices cut carbon pollution and can also save money. A major impediment to widespread adoption of beneficial electrification is the HVAC contractor community. Many vendors are ignorant or dismissive of these devices or may overcharge for installing or servicing them when in fact the equipment is widely available and eminently affordable. What would you do as county commissioner to get this community aware of and adopting beneficial electrification?
Thank you for the question. As mayor, I have been very supportive of beneficial electrification. In our community, we adopted the first in the state net zero building code. I've brought forward legislation to ban natural gas in all new buildings so that we would not be building buildings that would need to be retrofitted. But more than that, I've brought forward legislation to work on our retrofit program for our community. Unfortunately, with the Marshall Fire, we have slowed our progress on that some while we're responding to fire mitigation, but we plan to start that back up late in the year or early next year. But in any case, as county commissioner, my plan would be to deploy a program that's similar to some of the county programs that have existed for years with insulation and air sealing so that when people go to their building department in their city or in the county, if they're in an incorporated area, that they get information that there is access to contractor lists of who's able to put these different types of equipment in, the rebates that are available to county residents. We should expand the rebate programs and make it more accessible to more people in the county. These types of infrastructure improvements, they actually are more cost-effective than the gas alternatives. But there's an alternative narrative that's pushed by oil and gas and by HVAC communities, unfortunately, that really gives people misinformation. So we have to proactively, as the county, put out the correct information and put programs out so people know how to do it because otherwise what happens when people just go to sign up for a contractor? The contractor will naturally just replace exactly what's there with the same information. We need to move beyond that. We need to electrify all of our buildings. And I'm working on replicating the Ithaca model. I don't know if everyone here is familiar with that, but Ithaca is working on a program to help people be able to afford to retrofit their buildings all by 2030. We need to be on a track where we're leading the way, like Ithaca is now. Right now, we're falling behind, and as a globe, we just can't wait. So we need to get back on track and beneficial electrification.
Time.
Critical piece.
Thank you. And Elena, same question. A major impediment to widespread adoption of beneficial electrification is the HVAC contractor community. Many vendors are ignorant or dismissive of these devices or may overcharge for installing or servicing them when in fact the equipment is widely available and eminently affordable. What would you do as county commissioner to get this community aware of and adopting beneficial electrification?
Thanks for the question. I think we have multiple prongs to this question. One is definitely what you named about community education and contractor education. I have had this experience in trying to replace a furnace and not even having the option come up in the discussion. We shouldn't have to rely on homeowners to have to self-advocate to find that. It should be readily available, and we should have accountability for the contractors. I've talked to some of our union brothers and sisters about beneficial electric, electrification, excuse me. And there's a lot of potential here that we have shared mutual goals. And so education, both at the consumer level, at the homeowner level, I also agree that it's not always sold as the most economic option. So education also about upfront investment and how we can make sure that that is accessible to all of our community members. We need more than the few rebates that exist. If you're talking about a $20-plus thousand furnace project with the heaters, then we can't say, well, good news, there's a $500 rebate when families are thinking about how they're going to pay their electricity bill the very next month. So expanded grants and pilot programs to make sure that we are moving and retrofitting as many as we can, that we are moving away from natural gas in, in development.
Thirty seconds.
And, excuse me, I just lost my train of thought. And that we are supporting a move. I think another piece around education is talking about indoor air health. And I think that that's something that not a lot of people know. I think this crowd probably knows, but thinking about natural gas in our appliances and how that is leaking into our homes is another plate for education to move people towards that electric option.
Time. Thank you. The next question is going to Elena first and then Ashley. Boulder County has strengthened the rules that would make it difficult, but not impossible to frac in Boulder County. What are your views on fracking and would you support a fracking ban in Boulder County? Related to that, what other proposals would you support or initiate to improve air quality in Boulder County? Two minutes.
Thank you. I will absolutely contend with the fight against fracking and disentangling with oil and gas industry. We need to do everything we can locally, at statewide, and federally to advocate for reduction of fossil fuels. I am excited to work and continue to negotiate. I think we've seen where we can have some power against the monopolies and try to push them to close their coal sites faster. Let's accelerate that even more. Other areas that we need to attack are monitor, monitoring and capping of orphan wells and working with regional partners on what they are and aren't doing. Oil and gas should not be allowed to self-regulate. We need to make sure that we are monitoring air quality and advocating for accountability at the state level and national level as well. We do need to keep in mind equity and regional approaches here. This is where collaborative approaches and lending our voice are really important. Boulder County has a lot of weight to throw.
Boulder County has a lot of weight to throw behind climate action. And we don't always use it super effectively. So let's make sure that we are working together with neighboring communities, all of our municipalities. And let's stand up for others. We know that Suncor is poisoning a neighboring city in Commerce City. And obviously their yellow gas leaks into Boulder County as well.
Thirty seconds.
Plug that if you haven't watched the short video called Suncor Sundown, I would definitely watch it. I remember driving by that area as a kid and not much has changed and it's really sad to see. So let's continue to do education. Let's make sure we're monitoring. And let's work with neighbors, partners and disentangle from oil and gas and get off of carbon fuels.
Thank you. Ashley, same thing. What are your views on fracking? And would you support a ban on fracking in Boulder County? And what other proposals would you support or initiate to improve air quality in Boulder County?
Thank you. I support stopping taking any more fossil gas out of the earth. We have enough carbon in the air already. We already have a tremendous climate problem. We already are facing wildfires and terrible asthma and terrible sickness from everything we're doing. So we have got stop extracting. Fossil gas from the earth. We have to. So I support a fracking ban. I support cracking down on emissions. Where we can, we have issues with leaking of emissions, not monitoring emissions, not just at wells. But also at manufacturing facilities where people are permitted for certain amounts of poison that they can pump in the air and then it's not being monitored or regulated. We need accountability and measurement, and that's what government is for. It's not the jazzy side of government. That's the fun side, but. People expect that when there's a permit issued with a certain regulation and a certain rate that we enforce it. And we have an obligation to the community's public health and safety to do that. Additionally, you know, an area you asked what we could do about air quality, our emissions from vehicles. Is number one in the state causing us problems. And if you look at how we're going to get a hold of that, it is car emission standards. We have to advocate as a county for zero emission standards much more quickly. The adoption trajectory is not fast enough for zero emission vehicles. And it also includes a multimodal component where we get access to transit to more folks. And this is an area where we absolutely need to make sure that we're not leaving people behind. Because we've seen. So many times before, whether it was with air conditioning adoption in the fifties and sixties, or if it was with. Adoption of other types of things like internet technology where people are left behind for decades and it creates a huge disadvantage. We need to ensure that vehicle low emission. Zero emission vehicles are accessible to people in our county, especially those who need it the most.
Thank you. Next question is Ashley first, then Elena. As county commissioner, what countywide programs would you initiate? Or support to reduce the amount of greenhouse gases that are produced within the county? And more specifically, as county commissioner, what would you do to reduce the amount of greenhouse gases produced at? Boulder County government facilities in in its operations? Electrification of county buildings, transition vehicle fleets to EVs, reduce commutes for employees, other actions?
You said Ashley first, sorry.
Yes, please.
Thank you very much for the question. So we have, we have to lead by example. And county buildings and facilities and this is a tremendous source of emissions. So we have to electrify our own fleet. The county is currently purchasing renewable electricity for its buildings, but there are ways to reduce costs through different programs and by providing our own onsite. By providing onsite, we can also have some of the advantages we've talked about before in the hour around microgrids and resiliency. So we have to continue to look at how we can both get zero emissions. In our county operations and how we can lower our ongoing operating costs. And the beautiful thing. About solar power, wind power, all of these things is that it costs less. And that is what gets everybody so frustrated and upset. People always talk about, oh, it'll be so expensive to do this. If you look at the payback, particularly from a governmental perspective. And a government, you know, our government has been here for many years and we intend for it to be here for many, many more. We have a trajectory where we can really lower the cost to the community of providing government services in a more resilient and zero carbon way. Just through electrifying our buildings, through switching over to zero emission vehicles and things like that. But we really do need to set targets beyond just the government entity and we need to help, you know, all the government entities. We have a sustainability tax in our county. We can leverage that to help communities be able to all come along and use our economies of scale and purchasing power to be able to get. In the county turned over to be able to help, whether it's the city of Boulder, the city of Longmont, Lyons, Netherlands, everybody's going to need to come along. And if we work together as a collective, we'll get much farther and we'll have much greater results in reducing emissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Then Elena, same question. As county commissioner, what would you do to reduce the amount of greenhouse gas production and older county government facilities? And in its operations, electrification of county buildings, transition vehicle fleets to EVs, reduce commutes for employees, other actions?
I I've worked for the county for eight years and I know that in our own office, more than seventy percent of our employees commute in. We have over sixty thousand in commuters every day and in Boulder County that it's more than thirty percent of our greenhouse gas is coming from that transportation. The time is now, the time is yesterday to be a net zero county and decrease those emissions and fossil fuel reliance. And we need to keep pressure on our providers and think about those global impacts as well as our local, leaving by example. There's a lot of rhetoric. We have talked about housing and transportation since I was a little girl. And I am into action and I'm someone who gets done with coalition building and working with our neighbors. Obviously, we need to increase EV usage and the infrastructure to support electric vehicles. And we need to think about transportation hubs and neighborhoods. So gentle infill to reduce vehicle miles traveled. Embracing e-bikes, protected bike lanes can improve bike usership by eighty percent. Eco passes and electric buses. We are a very focused on car community and we need to think more about walkable neighborhoods and. That connectivity, that social connectivity that we also know saves lives in times of disaster. Now, we shouldn't have to rely on that. But it is that connectivity. Need to kind of get in this together. Expanding and codifying those EV charging ports and new plans and in retrofits is something that we can do immediately. I know that the county is working on a lot of these efforts already. And we can also look at embodied energy versus operational energy in commercial buildings as well. So things like concrete cost much more over the lifespan of a building. Than other materials potentially. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, Elena, you may answer first and then Ashley. The question is Boulder County agricultural lands have the potential to help solve the climate and biodiversity disasters. Do you support reducing chemical based commodity crops on county parcels? How will you work to increase regenerated agriculture and local food production? Could you stop rewilding and wild? Could you support rewilding and wildlife corridors in some of our publicly owned agricultural land?
Yes, like the last question, I think that this is a place where we can focus on the government's own kind of operations. And work with community partners. So as I said earlier, I'd love to incorporate indigenous leaders back into open space management plans. As my opponent said earlier, there's different types of protection of lands, both conservation and preservation. The agricultural land, the recreational land. But we have over thirty percent of our open space used for agriculture purposes. I'll tell you that while campaigning, one of the most exciting fields that I've been learning about. More and more is regenerative agriculture and it is a really great opportunity. One of the biggest building bricks, I think that we can use. Carbon sequestration reduction, reduction in pesticides, reduction in use of water. And those use of fertilizers are all incredible benefits to regenerative agriculture. And there are things that also save money. I do support. Or I don't support the use of the chemically modified crops and open space. I would love to see us. Continue with more. Better practices on our agricultural land. We also need to keep equity in mind and community education in mind. And think about ways that we can be more sustainable with our waste as well. And we have an opportunity.
Thirty seconds.
Opportunity to increase these practices, to be innovators in the field for new practices. Return to old practices that we know worked better. And this is a real opportunity that would I would absolutely support both for climate and biodiversity. And for food usage that's more local.
Thank you. Ashley, same question. Do you support reducing chemical based commodity crops on county parcels? How will you work to increase regenerative agriculture and local food production? Could you support rewilding and wildlife corridors in some of our publicly owned agricultural land?
Thank you very much for the question. As mayor, one of the first things that I led was an initiative to stop the use of glyphosate and two four D and organophosphates on our city lands. We don't manage agricultural land, but this is an effort to reduce very harmful chemicals that are known carcinogens and toxins to both animals and humans. And so I'm I'm demonstrating through my action to you all tonight that this is something I'm very passionate about. We have to be worried about our pollinators. We have to be worried about our soil health. The desertification of our land has happened over time because of the types of agricultural practices that we've seen. So we have to promote restorative regenerative agriculture. One of the hardest things for staff members is when there's this whiplash effect. So when a council or a commission puts in place a policy. It's sometimes hard to make change. It takes a few years and and there can be some growing pains and I believe that's what happened with the GMO ban. And rather than stick it out and work on addressing what the pain points were, like making sure that there were financial mechanisms. To reinvest into the the farmers who have been farming the land for years to help them offset some of their long term capital costs and things like that. Rather than address those concerns, there was sort of this whiplash effect to say, no, we're going to reverse policy. I think this was a misstep and I would be supportive of, you know, going back into place, really ensuring that we have put policies in place as commissioners. To support organic regenerative ag, to make sure that we have funded it through the budget process. The idea of rewilding and making wildlife corridors in agricultural areas is fantastic. Because we have disrupted wildlife, critical wildlife corridors, frankly, over time with our practices on county owned lands. We really have an opportunity there. To restore habitat, to restore our soil health and to ensure that all of those things will help us with fire mitigation and climate preparedness. So. We need to work hard at this. It's not easy. Don't get me wrong. I don't think it's easy, but we have to do the work.
Thank you. This will be the final question and it has two parts. Ashley, you may answer first and then Elena. The first part is, what is your goal for the amount of greenhouse gas production countywide by twenty thirty? The second part is. Are you willing to pledge to refuse campaign contributions from oil and gas executives, employees, lobbyists, attorneys and PACs?
Thank you. For the first part of the question. The my the goal ha- I mean, we have to have an eighty percent overall reduction by twenty thirty. We can have a. More aggressive goal for electricity production on, you know, we should have a hundred percent renewable electricity by twenty thirty. That's very attainable. But overall, we have to reduce our emissions by at least eighty percent. We have to for future generations. They're counting on it. They depend on it. I would love to get a commission that wants to get together and look at tactics to get a stretch goal beyond the eighty percent. But I think starting with eighty percent overall reduction is really a fantastic place. I have no problem refusing contributions from oil and gas companies, from oil and gas packs, from lobbyists and attorneys that represent the companies. None of these people would want to contribute to my campaign. In any case, I have a really strong track record on eliminating oil and gas and eliminating service stations and fuel lines. I did go to Colorado School of Mines, so many of my college friends are in oil and gas industries and mining industries. And they agree with me that we need to stop extracting fossil gas and support my campaign to get us to zero emissions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Elena, same two questions. First, what is your goal for the amount of greenhouse gas reduction countywide by twenty thirty? And second, are you willing to pledge to refuse campaign contributions from oil and gas executives, employees, lobbyists, attorneys and PACs?
Thanks for the question. Yes, I think we need to work hard to get us to those greenhouse gas emissions. I think we need to also think about what our metrics are now so that we can show the public if we are on track for that. And have some of that transparency of where we're going and how we're going to get there. I'm in touch with a lot of our community, a lot of community leaders from those grassroots activists. And we need to make sure that we're communicating to the community in a way that these are not changes that are happening to them, but that they can be part of the solution. And we are going to make sure we're not leaving those who need the help the most behind in these efforts. By twenty fifty, the county is goals to be ninety percent lower than two thousand and five. We can definitely speed that up. I love the goal of forty five percent lower than two thousand and five, but I agree with my opponent that we can do better and accelerate that path. The IEA roadmap for twenty fifty includes retrofits at two point five percent starting in twenty thirty. We can accelerate that metric now. That's an area where the county can definitely start supporting people and encouraging retrovits through builds and remodels. As well as helping homeowners make their houses carbon neutral or net negative. We've seen the impacts. We cannot let off the gas. I hate to use that analogy. But we have to command more from the monopolies that are using this energy. Solar and microgrid legislation. I also have no problem. I'm not taking money from PACs or LLCs or executives or employees. Or lobbyists. And so we are together in that. I am definitely wanting to disentangle from oil and gas. And the folks who are supporting me are environmental activists as well.
Thank you. And now each candidate will have three minutes to make a closing statement and we'll start with Ashley.
Thank you. We're experiencing the negative effects of climate change. The communities of East County, Superior, Lewisville, we all know too urgently that we have to take climate action. I I know you all saw what we've been through and some of you on the call have been through it yourselves firsthand. I'm a proven leader with a track record of not only saying we'll reduce emissions, but actually have results to show for it. We set targets in our community here in Lewisville of a hundred percent renewable electricity for all city facilities and we beat our target on time. We set the first ever citywide emission reduction target. We did the first ever sustainability plan. And the and the first in state net zero building code. Our community has passed a twenty five cent single use bag tax. I have consistently brought forward legislation to reduce and remove gas and fossil fuel from our building code. I brought forward a proposal that will ban natural gas and I've consistently voted against any new gas service stations. In our city, we mapped abandoned and historic oil and mining facilities and addressed hazardous situations. We've even adopted novel legislation since I've been on council that's prevented drilling in our community. I've supported dozens of projects to increase multimodal transportation. And our collaborative governments here in East County with the county have worked together to bring forward affordable housing units in our community that have absolutely no natural gas in them. My background in engineering and project management gives me a unique perspective as a public servant. So I can take the community's vision and employ a plan of action so we'll actually get results. I'd like to be your next county commissioner so I can take my decade of experience as a public servant and support a more resilient future. We need countywide improvements in our disaster management and preparedness. We need countywide solutions to address our unhoused and housing affordability issues. We need a regional approach for our transportation gaps and issues. And we urgently need to take climate action to reduce our carbon emissions. I'm a proven leader. I'm Ashley Stolzmann and I hope I can count on your vote in the race for the next Boulder County Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Elena.
I'm running because I'm action driven and a career public servant. I'm not a scientist. I'm not a career politician. But I don't live in rhetoric. I live in problem solving and solutions. My mind is set to work on climate action and equity and I will help us deliver the results we need for our futures. For our children and for our children's children. We're leaders in this state. This is a global problem and we need regional results, which means collaborating and partnering with municipal leaders, neighboring counties. And throwing our weight as Boulder County more effectively. I'm an advocate and social justice attorney by trade and I hope you believe me that Boulder County will continue to be and even be more active. In local, state and federal policymaking. We will disentangle from oil and gas interests, fight for regulations, independent monitoring, cleanup and. Independent monitoring, cleanup and accelerating closure of coal plants. Let's pull the plug on Pueblo. Climate action, expanding renewables on micro and the larger grid. Adds to climate resiliency for homes and communities as well as decreasing our greenhouse gas emissions. Open space, preservation and conservation, wildlife habitats and working with indigenous leaders on land management is part of it. The waste and compost solutions and regenerative agriculture are places where we can literally dig where the dirt is soft. Transportation and housing solutions have been talked about for decades. Greener building, accelerated retrofitting, assistance for lower income families. Gentle infill and density options like ADUs and expedited mobility solutions must be a part of it. And we need leaders who can deliver the action on those plans. Reviewing plans and codes with what we've learned about climate and resiliency to continue to modernize them. But also in transparent communication with the public so that we don't have outcry. When we have those policies enacted and we're not leaving people behind. The two sitting commissioners who remain in their seats, Claire Levy and Marta Loachman have both endorsed me. As well as the chief of staff in her personal capacity, obviously. And former commissioner Deb Gardner, the champion for our environment. They understand the role and that matters because in three commissioners. It's important that the person who serves with them can bridge. If the three commissioners don't work well together, progress can get stymied. I'm a connector. I work well with others, but I'm not talking about group think or people pleasing. I have bucked systems my whole life and I have driven systemic reform. I will not bend on climate activism. I will not bend on equity. I lead in a way that doesn't demand that you follow me, but invites you to be part of the change. Courage is what we need for change and together we have got this. I have this.
Thank you very much. This has been Empower Futures Empower Hour with the candidates for Boulder County Commissioner. We'd like to thank the candidates, our affiliated organizations and most of all. You, Boulder County's engaged citizens. Thank you for coming out tonight. As a reminder, the primary election day for county commissioner is June twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. Qualified residents may register to vote up to and including election day. However, to receive a bail in a ballot in the mail, the Boulder County Clerk and Recorder's Office must receive your voter registration. No later than eight days prior to the election. If you register after this time, you must visit a voting center in order to vote. More voting information is available at the Boulder County Clerk's website.
Please join our mailing list at empowerfuture.org and be with us again at our future Empower Hours. And please join us at the June Empower Hour. When the city of Boulder will present information and answer questions about the city's climate initiatives. And that will be on Thursday, June sixteenth at six PM. We hope to see you then. Thank you and good evening.